I'm gonna call this meeting to order at six thirty and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by. All right, so the first thing on the agenda is to amend the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments today? About approving the previous minutes from the June twenty sixth meeting.
Make a motion.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, I noticed that my name was, I was identified as Jay Jefferson and um under the part of our. The sun kissed approval, um so.
Okay.
I think my name needs to be great.
So as long as we get that edited, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Ryan, how do you vote?
Hi.
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 All right, the minutes have passed. Are there any public comments for items not on the agenda? We're gonna get right into new business with the action item to consider setting the fiscal year twenty twenty six municipal tax rate. Get away, Tom.
Okay, well, there are three pages in the packet that have to do with this. The first two just give you background information on what all goes into it. There's more information issue on veterans exemption and things like that. Um, the last page contains the actual rates that need to be set and accepted. So yeah, I'll answer them if not. The motion that is in red on the last page.
Do we need both of them?
You need to do both. I'll make a motion that we accept the tax rates as presented.
What?
You 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 said you set the municipal residential and non-residential rates at one dollar, three, six, nine, zero cents.
And I will. I will second that. I think everybody cranked up for a moment. Uh, do we have any discussion? All right, Mary, how do you vote?
Good.
Hi.
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 Brian?
Hi.
All right, so the first one has passed. We just needed a motion to accept the residential educates education tax rate of one point two zero three eight and non-residential rate of one point one nine five three.
I'll make that motion to accept the residential education tax rate, so zero through eight, three eight and non-residential rate, one four one five three.
Is there any discussion? Ryan, how do you vote?
Hi.
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 I'm.
All right, so both of the votes cast.
Oh, now I have a question. Is that a pretty big increase or is it pretty minimal? Uh, just off the top of my head.
Yes.
It's um, the municipal side is up about nine point nine five percent. The school side is up less than a half a pin or less than half a percent. Put them together, a tax bill will go up about five percent, four point nine something percent.
This is an admission that we have already set, right? I mean, no, no, this is for next year.
This is for twenty twenty six.
The tax bills that will go out now and will be due first payment.
So that this will be what it reflects?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, next up, we have another action item to consider accepting the fiscal year two thousand twenty six education tax rate.
You just.
Oh, sorry, you just did that.
We're moving along.
We're gonna consider registering the zoning administrator with the Judicial Bureau.
This is a stuff that's at the recommendation of our attorney. It has to do with how we're going after blighted properties and abandoned things. Sometimes you need somebody registered with the Judicial Bureau and has a ticket book and all that kind of stuff. Bob Hake was registered when he was, and I think in ten years we used it once. So um, this is for a particular situation with one of our derelict homes. So the select board has to ask that uh how how he be uh listed with the Judicial Bureau and if you do that and you sign this, all the board members have to sign it on two different uh, just one page, then that goes off to them and they give her a number. She can write Vermont civil violation traffic gap things. Yeah, it's it's like, there's a difference between uh zoning enforcements and ordinance enforcements. So sometimes it's one, sometimes the other, and so far our zoning um enforcement hasn't moved the needle on these properties. So this goes like a step more serious. I don't know if it could much more action, but it's the next step.
Mary.
So does this allow us to pass fines and ordinances to to alleviate situations like on Central Street? Is that part of, is this helpful or not?
We already have all that.
It allows her to write the ticket. It's like instead of a a cop writing it, she can write it.
And we, and she couldn't do that before.
See, that's maybe I should know more, but the lawyers send letters. And there there's a couple of properties that are not gonna go into who they are uh that have already been notified that they are in violation of our, it's Title thirteen in the ordinances. And that can carry up to some are fifty dollars a day, some are two hundred dollars a day, depending on what you're doing. And you're getting those things and it goes to the environmental court and it gets processed out. So we're already doing that. So I don't know if this is something that allows the zoning administrator to to take an additional step, but we are, all the ordinances are in place, all the fine finding mechanisms are in place. Um, we never collect anything on them really, but.
This is maybe allowing them to force those things that are already there because it's like it it's registered that she has that authority. I I would have just thought that we had done this before. That part I was kind of confused that like we're just doing it now. I just sort of thought this is something that automatically happens with the zoning person.
Cause zoning right writes a letter of a notice of violation.
I see.
When they don't comply, we pass it off to the attorney.
Oh.
They start doing things instead of, or in addition, they're gonna get a book and I, as I'm thinking through it, the book kind of like a a ticket from the police will say, this is what you did and this is your fines. So it's a, it's an additional mechanism to try to get action taken, but from a practical matter, it won't be instituting a new process or a new fine. It's with, those are already in place. It's just another way to do what we're already doing.
Okay. Wouldn't she have to see people? But she works remotely, right?
She's in, she's in town one week a month.
Oh, one week a month, okay.
Jeffrey.
Yeah, my question was to she, is she okay with doing this part of the job?
Okay. Yeah. And and she wouldn't go alone and you can mail them and things like that. There there's certified mail, serving them in person. There's one place they're never there. So that's then maybe this, it's for that property that all of this stuff we've done, we don't have any validation that they've ever seen any, they don't pick up their mail, they're not there, they don't respond to certified mails. So this could be another way to do that.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we sign this um appointment letter.
Second. Is there any more discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Hi.
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 Ryan?
Hi.
All right. Next is another action item to consider the approval of a two hundred thousand dollar loan for a five-year term with municipal infrastructure.
Okay, this is a not gonna ask you to do that vote, but we've got drama. And then this was where the drama was when the agenda was put together. The drama is we have bond authorization to do things like replace sewer pipes and water pipes and paper roads and things like that. So in twenty twenty two, the town passed a bond at town meeting authorizing the town to enter into a one million dollar bond to do paving and such. In twenty twenty three, we went to the bond bank and presented a bond application and they say, that's great. Here's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. All good so far. This year, on the same bond, we owe to our bond bank, we submit an application to take two hundred thousand from that same authorization. This time, the lawyer, our lawyer says, uh, you didn't follow the procedures correctly per statute, so we can't write you a letter. I said, what did we do? They said, you didn't put a notice in the newspaper for three weeks on the same day each week. I said, we posted it in three physical places, we put it in two electronic places, we put it in fifteen hundred annual reports, it went out in the newsletter and it went on Facebook page. That doesn't count. And this statute for newspapers was written in the nineteen forties and they've never changed it. And I went back and I looked and I said, well, in two thousand and twenty three and in two thousand and seventeen on a different bond, it was accepted that the newsletter was a publication of record and we got the money. Well, that may be the case, but we're not gonna sign a lot for you. Okay, so we've been going back and forth with the attorney on this.
Their attorney, their attorney.
It's it's really ours.
Our attorney.
Ours, I'm, I'm not gonna get into it, but and aside from this change of heart, I'll say, the person who we used to deal with at the bond bank uh retired and passed away. Ron, who did it on our end, passed away. Not related, but we've been going through different things with Mascoma Bank when we get loans, cause all their people are still alive but retired. So there there are a lot of new people in play. One of the things that our attorney mentioned is that the bond bank people are much more particular and the bond bank hired Boston at law firm to help them go through things and they're being very particular and kicking things back, kind of like it's not our problem, uh, you know, we're not gonna do it, it's a bond bank. When I pressed them on them more, I said, so is the bond bank denying us or you? Because the bond bank has already said, okay. And they said, no, we won't write the law. So we have some options, but right now we were planning on pulling a couple hundred thousand dollars to pave a park and ride lot that we got a grant to pay for half of on River Street, Depot Avenue, uh, the parking lots that were parked there and a couple of bigger patches around that. Our attorney's suggestion was in order to fix this, we could hold a special town meeting that just has this on it. And I said, we've done the same thing for every bond. We got a number of bond authorizations out there. So I don't want to do this more than once. And I'm not sure we have to do it at all. So I said, we're gonna put everything on hold. I'm gonna grab all the information that we have on all of the bonds that we've been authorized for and figure out what we have to do. And if we have to do something, we'll just put questions on the March town meeting. But we're not gonna just go through all this rigmarole for this and this would be the only money. So what um what I think we can get by doing is two of the big patches. One, one is on Central Street where there was a water main break. There's another one behind the Windsor House where there was a water main break. Um, we can pay for those. We already have some uh water utility bond money, so we'll just use that instead. And I think if we can come up with a hundred thousand dollars, we can do the paving that we wanted to do. We don't need two, we can just do a hundred and the two is to do a little extra if the guy was gonna be in town. So by the next meeting, I'll see what our cash position is, what we're doing. We can probably pay for it out of pocket and if we get the legal stuff straightened out, get a loan, you know, one of the things that we've been caught on, not caught in a bad way, but I said, well, we'll just work this out and I'll get a bond anticipation. And the lawyer said, well, I don't know if you can, because you don't know if you're gonna get the bond, because you didn't do it right. So I'm like, come on. Anyway, so I'm a little frustrated. If we did something wrong, that's that's fine. I think in working with the people that we're working with on the bond bank for some other things, the the payment for the uh air conditioning and stuff like that, I think we're gonna find a resolution because everybody agrees, we we met the spirit of what needed to be done. There are things that attorneys can write that say something wasn't followed, but as long as the select board votes to say it wasn't with malicious intent, it was unfamiliarity with statutes or oversight or something like that. So in a situation like this, so that we published it everywhere, yes, we didn't publish it in the paper. They can do that. I don't know why they won't do that.
Do we have? Can we not just publish it in the paper and cover that face and be done?
We have to do um, it has to get published for three weeks.
No, for three weeks.
And we have to, and it has to be within like one of the weeks has to be within um five to ten days of the town meeting. So that's why you would have to hold a different town meeting, like twelve people would show up and it would fail, you know, ten to two and uh, but we'd have to publish. So that's where there's all these steps that you have to take.
Well, that's definitely some drama.
It is some drama than driving Natalia and I crazy. I was on vacation doing the diligent work that I always do when I'm on vacation, but I was not planning on being this diligent. Like, what, this can't be right. Anyway, it is, we're going through it, that's what's going on. So be aware that um uh in order to proceed with some paving, which we don't need to do until October, so we we're gonna need a hundred thousand somewhere unless the attorneys and I'm gonna get another opinion. So anyway, that's what's going on. So we don't have to vote on that, but that's the drama behind.
Pause it for now.
Yes.
That's why there was no paperwork on it.
Yeah.
Looking for, what time is this?
Um, this is kind of not a hundred percent. How are we prioritizing what work we're doing on the roads and everything? Like, how are we making those choices? Will you tell me that later?
I can, the.
Or not like, do you know?
Well, it did. The the short version for real projects is every five years, we get a uh road and sidewalk inventory and culvert inventory from the Regional Planning Agency.
Okay.
It's all roads, good, fair, poor condition, things like that. So we have that, then we go by uh roads that have higher use have higher priority. Um, and then the the final consideration is if there is grant money for certain stipulations like State Street and Scotty, you're eligible for some money that all the other roads aren't, we'll apply for the grants and if we get the grant, and it's kind of like this this park and ride. It wasn't a huge priority, but we got thirty thousand to do and it's fifty thousand to build it, so we're gonna do that. And and since we're doing that, this was more, the paper guy is gonna be in the area.
Yeah.
Depot Avenue's junky, you know, there's businesses back there, we got the new park there, so let's just put together a hundred thousand dollar project. So that's how that works.
Okay, thank you.
You're you're welcome. And you will see, uh, I just got pretty much the last book from the engineers for the uh engineering design for uh Central and Turkey. So that's a big project. That came about because it's in really bad condition and needs water, sewer, stormwater and all that kind of stuff. So that's how a project came to the next one. We'll get that estimate, there'll be a bottom question in March to see if you want to do that like that. That will be, I'm sure, more than a million dollars to do that.
Well, next we have an action item to consider the approval for a twenty eight thousand dollar loan for a five-year term to purchase a replacement for a police cruiser.
Okay, so that's, that's what it is. It's a loan through Mascoma Bank for twenty eight thousand dollars to purchase a new, but twenty twenty three Dodge Durango to replace one of our existing ones that uh will sell, but we can swap out the police stuff. We getting traded on that or is that, we're getting it for twenty eight, you know, twenty eight? So and the, we'll figure out the uh the swapping out of the lights and the electronics and all that kind of stuff, but by comparison, the last one we bought was sixty six, all in, so.
Was this part of the budget?
Yeah.
Oh, so this is just the actual paperwork that we all talked.
Yeah, in the, in the, in the um capital budget, there's money that we save for and then there's a refresh rate on loans and on the second half of it. So this is scheduled to be done.
It's a really good price, cause I just got three of them six months ago and I think we paid thirty five, so it's a good price on that.
Yeah, now we are, new one's forty three. Well, that, yeah, I mean, roughly speaking, forty grand for the car, fifteen to twenty to outfit it, depending on how far you have to go. So that's what they cost.
Yeah.
I will make the motion for the twenty eight thousand dollar loan.
Okay.
Replace the police cruiser.
It's a five-year loan at four point nine nine percent.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Here, I'm, Ryan, how do you vote?
Hi.
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 Now we're gonna go into old business with the action item to consider the approval of utility budget.
Okay. So uh, this is a little different because you guys are the utility commission. So where the town budget goes to the public, you guys vote on the budgets. So you gotta vote to approve the budget first. So there's a page in there that lists the motions and if you want to make the motions and then if you want to have discussion about it, we can do it that way.
The page with eight motions, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I tried to have my ducks in the air.
A summary?
Oh, is it this one?
No, it's here.
Oh, it's here. Oh, okay.
Okay.
It's this, all of these motions, okay.
No, I see. And so we have to do each one separately.
What I would say is make the first four together.
And then, okay.
And and then I can just, cause it's all related.
Okay.
I'm here. I'll make a motion, we approve the sewer budget, motion ones to approve the sewer budget value at uh, one million, four hundred thousand thirteen, one forty four, motion to set the sewer fixed rate at four hundred and forty six dollars and nineteen cents, motion to set the sewer variable rate at four dollars and ninety nine cents for one thousand gallons and motion to set the un-metered sewer rate at eight hundred and ten and thirty five cents.
A year.
Yeah.
That's for somebody who doesn't have a meter, that last one.
Second, all those motions that were made.
Is there any discussion?
I I I have a question, like, um, I was looking at, this is the sewer one.
Mm-hmm.
Why did it seem like it went up so much? Like it practically doubled and it, drivers are right here.
Oh, okay.
But I know, but it just seemed like a lot to me too. When I was just looking at the numbers across the board, this one, the sewer one?
I'm looking at, so you look here to here, so it didn't double.
Okay.
So as discussed, so I'm fifteen percent.
Okay.
So.
Seems like a lot.
It is a lot. Um, so the budget on both of them are going up about fifteen percent and half of that on both of them is because the contributions to the capital reserves in both funds are two hundred thousand a year. One of them right now is seventy five thousand, the other one's a hundred. So it's a very big percentage increase. It's not a ton of money. Um, we haven't done major sewer work or water work in some time and where the say the last ten years, there was a lot of big projects need to be done and we bonded a lot. We haven't been bonding very much. Stuff is still getting older and I, my expectation in is that we really should have a million and a half, two million dollars in each of the capital reserves, cause when when big things fail, you can't not do it and you need to have the money on hand. And if we we still do have some bond authorization, but instead of just borrowing all the time, I think setting the capital reserves uh up to like maybe another fifty thousand next year, so there's two hundred fifty thousand going in each. With all that said, so this was late, I put it in a package uh last year. Over the last fifteen years, the average annual increase has been one point nine percent. So um wh- what I have been done doing since I've been here, the budget is, for the first two years I was here, went down eight percent and thirteen percent the first two years. So it went down a lot. There's a lot of chronicle all that. And then we would bond and we would reduce the capital contributions and offset that by new bond payments. And then we would feather the capital contributions back in till we got another bond and then we would reduce the capital and put it back up. So that's what's been going on. Now we just haven't been bonding for the last few years. We still have all the need we have. Um, so having the cash in the bank, I would say is more important, cause money is also more expensive. We were bonding for really cheap in the past, but you know, less than two percent, fifteen years, I'll stand behind that any day. The other, the other part is just to not sugarcoat this. We have a big system and a small population. This isn't getting better. Like, it's, we've spent millions doing what we need to do and nothing is in terrible shape, but there are things that really need to be fixed. The pump station that's over Paradise Park that serves the hospital, that that's big one. If you, the pump station, it's at the intersection of Union and and Scotty Street that's in there. There's a water main that goes out there that if you live up in the neighborhood where Day Street and stuff is, if you're taking a shower at the same time your neighbor is, you may not get any water. And that's just, something's gone back. It's an undersized main that's been there, no problem, but but they're out there. So um this isn't like a one-time fix-all and the, you know, a story I tell a lot when I got here, an engineering company that had done work for the town dropped a big report on my desk and said, it's a twelve million dollar project. That's what you have to do just for the sewer. And I said, you can't do that. So I hired another engineering company. They did a peer review of the first one. We got that down to about four million dollars. We did two million of the work and then we, right away, we did another two million of the work. So we we have a really good assessment of what the conditions are, but even that's being ten years old, but I got, I just don't want it to say, okay, this is, this is it. It's all fixed now, it cannot.
How common is, are like, how many other places have a similar situation with like a big system like this and a small population? Is this like, um, I was about to say unnatural, is it?
How did we get there, I guess?
Yeah. Is it just from when all the businesses were here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's.
Well, there's more coming though, so.
Oh, need more coming that are gonna use a lot of water and then flush it. Do you know, but like harpoons over there using a lot of water, but then they sell it. It doesn't go down the drains. We only get it on one side.
There's only.
Somebody else gets it, not us. So it's a, it's a lot more stable if you're what we say, you're not a big city, we say a ten thousand people, that's a lot bigger than us, and a small commercial base, but a high residential base, houses are there forever. So if you have dense populations, it's residential, you can count on your unit counts and stuff like that. But if you have a big production facility and it goes out of business, you still get something.
Yeah.
But in in any, you know, industrial town anywhere in the country that has gone through that would have seen similar things and you can't just say, well, we'll make everybody at the bottom third of town move north and we'll just cut off that part of the system. You gotta make it the whole thing. They get mad.
All right, thanks, sorry. Thank you. All right, so we're gonna vote on one through four. We have a motion in a second. Ryan, how do you vote?
Hi.
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 So the first four have passed.
Um, and so somewhere in in the notes, just like, it's a huge percentage and and I I know money is obviously important to everyone, but it means that your uh your sewer bill is gonna go up ninety eight dollars for the year. So it's not like a thousand.
I was gonna ask you to kind of brief it. So that's the big, and then it'll go up again, you have it down here, cause I yeah, so it's.
Yeah, a hundred and seventy dollars, a hundred and seventy five dollars.
Be along with some people, though.
It was, we know, I mean, the delinquencies, you know, we we see people struggle, so. We know when they struggle more is when it doesn't work. The calls that come in when my, got sewage backing up in my basement or why doesn't my water? Got sewage backing up in my basement or why doesn't my water come out of my faucet? They're madder than they are when they get it done. Okay, if you want to do the same thing for the water budget.
Water budget, motion to approve the water budget value at one million. Three, three hundred and eighty nine thousand.
Nine thousand, oh, sorry about that.
Uh, one million, three hundred and eighty nine thousand.
Nine hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty two cents.
Said there, motion to set the water fix rate at three hundred eighty seven dollars, seventy seven cents. Motion to set the water variable rate at. Three dollars in eight.
Eighty, eighty. Eighty zero seven cents.
Eighty zero seven cents for a thousand gallons and motion set the unmetered water rate at six hundred and ninety two dollars, seventy four cents.
All the same things as said for the first one, it's for the second one.
Second, all those motions again for the water budget.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Mary, how do you vote?
Fine.
I.
I.
Bye.
All right, so all eight of those have passed.
And I didn't mention with the tax one, but the fifteen year average. Tax increase has been three point two six percent. So it's five percent this year, but. It, that doesn't happen all the time. Kind of just shows that the board's always been conscientious about the increases are gonna.
Question, could we anticipate it's gonna increase by this much next year or, or is this a trend? That we're gonna have to do to, to meet the budget, I mean.
Swear it.
Yeah, yes, but the water sewer, the tax.
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Figure maybe a five percent, not, oh, because I think what's gonna, so. This had a hundred thousand dollars added to each. Going forward, I think the boards can pick twenty five or fifty thousand to add till you get to two fifty. So that part won't happen, but. Um, I think there is gonna have, I know there's gonna have to be a water and sewer bond for. Central Street because that's all gonna have to get replaced. Stormwater's gotta be replaced. So that'll probably be another. Uh. Seventy five or eighty thousand a year for twenty years, uh, for each of those bonds.
Will that be happening this year?
Uh, it'll go out the bid for next year.
Okay, I was just curious.
It'll go out the bid after the. We're sure we have the money at town meeting, but I'll have the, uh, cost estimates and, and the bid packages put together for, um, early, uh, winter.
So the patches in the meantime on Central Street or, Street are an improvement.
Yeah, and if we're down there, we can like skim over some of the other things. It, it's gonna be bad, but it'll be better.
Right. It might get worse before it gets better.
But it's not bad. I mean, it's, it looks like there's been work.
Yeah, I did notice that, I will say. Um, okay, so that was the first two there, right? We did the budget and the rates.
Yep.
So now we're, we have another action item. To consider a loan for four hundred seventy five thousand dollars at zero percent interest from municipal. RLF and reserve funds for the purchase of homes for fifteen and twenty nine National Street.
So. Tom, on this, it's just money coming out of revolving loan fund and it's not necessarily costing anything. It's not increasing our. Taxes or anything like that, correct?
That's correct. And I did make an adjustment that I didn't. Adjust the agenda that you can do alone if you want to for four sixty five instead of seventy five. Um.
Do we need to?
You don't have, I'm, it's up to, so we won't spend it if we don't need it. When I did four seventy five, it was just to get finalized numbers. There's a. Itemized list of the additions since the last time. Um, and as that shows, we have three hundred and ninety thousand in the, uh, revolving loan funds that we can pull from. So, um, it's pretty common to loan that money at no interest or almost no interest anyway, even when we lend it to other people. So since we're lending it to ourselves, that's why it's got no interest. Uh, and then to augment that with, uh, money from the reserve fund. With, uh, I think I put in there, our expectation is that we're gonna sell the house on Jarvis Street. And that money from the sale will go back into the, uh, RLF fund and we'll have access to that.
So is there no mortgage on that house right now? Like it, there's no, we don't owe the bank for that?
Or no, it doesn't, it's like. Wick owes the RLF for that. So we, we, we have to have twenty nine National Street transferred to the town from Wick. And they don't have to, but they don't like owning that house. So, uh. The, the, I think I put in there, if, if you go to Zillow or Relet or whatever, it's like a hundred thousand dollars seems to be the value. So that puts us in the ballpark that. We didn't lose any money, uh, given what we've received in payments since two thousand and seventeen. And so if we do that, we put that money back in and, uh, that just goes back.
Yeah, I didn't know if it was paid off and like you're paying the bank and then was ever left goes to back to the town and for that seventy five, right, so.
So how long will the town be paying the, if we do it this way? How long would it?
How long would it take to pay him back?
Yep.
That will be up to yous, guys.
The seventy five thousand, you mean?
The four hundred and thirty five thousand. If we take it from the revolving loan fund and the reserve funds. How long? Would it take us, I guess, to pay?
Let it be rental, rental money that'll pay that.
Yeah, my, my, with the. As long as you're good with that, and the money's coming from here at that rate. How it will get paid back is the revenue that comes in from the houses will pay for them. So if it's a sale that pays for them, if it's. Rental.
So it could be a thirty year.
It could be a long time.
Like, without a sale. Without a sale, oh, yeah.
No.
If. From everything I see, we should easily be able to get two grand a month. So that's four thou, for each. So that's four thousand dollars. Plus, we're gonna get a thousand dollar utility bill sets. Um. Uh, two, four, um. Not a month. I, we'll just say we're gonna get four thousand dollars a month. And. And if you put it all forward, round number, you just say you got fifty thousand a year, so you got nine or ten years.
Um, sorry.
Sorry.
I don't think that's something that we should be afraid of because one of the biggest things anybody ever says is we need to do something about housing. So. This is us doing something about housing and I think. I hope it doesn't suck. I think it's gonna be fine.
I'll be very happy when I actually see the houses there. I mean, because it is new for everybody. Um, I'm confident that it's all gonna go well. I think that. Likelihood of losing money is. Pretty low because I think the other thing that happens is every time we do this, it makes everything down there worth a little bit more. And I mean, that's the whole idea. It's if you do nothing, everything works let, where it's worth less until it's worth nothing. By doing this, we're helping out the neighborhood and making it. Better for everyone and rents don't stay the same for twenty years. Um. So it'll be up to the board to, to say what they want to do. And if you go to the market and the market says, are you crazy? You get twenty five hundred dollars a month for it, then. Then I know you. Let me put things in perspective. You know, that whole, uh. Spend twenty five to thirty percent of your money on your mortgage, right? So if you're gonna spend two thousand dollars a month. Uh. On your mortgage. That's, you should be making eight thousand a month, seven thousand a month. And two people, you know, that's a hundred grand. That's, that's not like two hundred fifty thousand a year. That's two people making forty thousand dollars a year each. That's. On the low end.
I'll think about it.
Fine.
I'm excited about this. I, I think. I'm excited about it.
You know what they always say, don't own a nice house, know a friend that has one.
Real, I don't, so.
I'm done.
Okay.
So anyway, um.
So it's the owners is on the select board going, moving forward for the next twenty years to make sure that this money gets paid back.
Correct, like the money, we'll have a property management company, so they'll have to get a piece of the pie out of all that. At some point, the board can decide. To sell it. And pay it off. You can decide to sell it for whatever you can get, just so you have more cash back in, so you can buy another house and. You know, that kind of stuff. There's, there's, there'll be a lot of options that go along with this, so.
As long as it doesn't kind of get lost on the wayside. I'm just thinking.
We're gonna keep that. We will have, like, like the, the Jarvis Street house, River Valley Properties manages it.
Right.
Um. They collect the rent, they take their cut, they give it to Wick. And it just happens.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so this will, this is not something you're gonna, did somebody send out the rent check?
Right.
It, it'll happen or it won't, and then they get involved with that as well.
Okay, so there's another element that, that keeps this momentum.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what.
So we would need a. Motion.
Got that already? No?
No.
Okay.
I don't remember that.
Make the motion. Right.
Second. Is there any more discussion?
Timeline. I, I don't remember that from the last discussion. Um.
You, you approve this, I'll have to write two fifty two thousand dollar checks this week. To get the house under construction. The expectation right now is that they would be on site in November.
Here's a question, and I know it's, I think I know the answer, but there's no way to back out of this at this point. Like, we all were like, just totally negative about it. We really couldn't because things have been put in motion, correct?
Right now, you could say, no, we're not gonna give you the money and.
All right, but then would the penalty be to us? Nothing?
Well, we might get ten thousand dollars for the design work they've done so far.
Okay. It would be on housing too.
Well, once, once they get housing. Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I get that.
But once we sign the purchase and sales, that gets, I mean, then they're gonna be on the hook.
They send them money, then they're gonna send us money back.
But if this does work, this could be something that could help moving forward with getting more. Housing. Like, was that the, I know there's other towns waiting to see if this works out.
Yeah, I, I think simply put, we already own, own other properties. This company makes duplexes and four unit apartments that all on the same premise. So that lot that's on River Street, it could go like that. Um. The, behind the diner, uh, Great Blanchard is already, he's gotta do some work on, on the site work. Um, other houses become available that are Daryl, like they just wanted the corner of, uh, Central and, and River Street. Like, that could be, now you know what you're gonna do. We see that house, the town acquires it through tax sale or something like that. We're gonna know how much it costs to knock them down, know how much it is to put one on and. And it can, it can be the, the plan.
And regenerate the neighborhood, basically.
Yeah.
And we're losing the capital reserve, or whatever there was, which hurts and is scary revolving. The revolving loan fund, which I've talked to so many people about. Whenever anybody asks me about the select board for the first year, I was like, you know that the one's. Time revolving.
Yeah, but how many people applied for it?
Silo.
Well.
Other.
There, there was a time, when, when the corporate park was filling up. Everybody up there. On a significant loss. Um.
But they're loosening up some purse strings, aren't they, in the state a little bit to try to encourage people to come in and build and do things?
Hmm.
To some degree.
It's not getting worse.
I've read anyway, I.
I'm gonna say it's still very difficult. Um, you. You forget things like the apartment building that was built that we're all happy for, but. The. Price tag on that was fifteen million. Take a guess what it, where the taxable value is on our graph.
It's like a million, isn't it?
One point four. Because it's subsidized because commercials are based on the income generation, so it can generate any money. So essentially, all of us are contributing to their rent. And that's fine and there's a role for it, but that can't be the answer. For everything.
And it's cost prohibitive, that building, if you look at, if you were to do that out of, like, an investor. It, it's absolutely insane, cost prohibitive, like you wouldn't. To turn a profit on that. It just.
That's why there isn't any building because, anyway. So this would be a way that it, it helps a lot when you know what the cost to build is, instead of having to guess what it's gonna be and then finding a lot of unknowns along the way. So I, I, and it's relatively low, I think, very low risk to find out that answer. So, uh, I think there's a lot of upside, not much downside. And, oh, the, the revolving loan fund. The Springfield Regional. Planning Commission has a revolving loan fund and we have access to other money that, um. We can put back in there. And if everything goes right and we are putting, you can say three thousand dollars a month in. And we have thirty or forty thousand within a year, that's, that falls in line with what most people would want.
Yeah. Yeah, I just think it's worth it. I think it's worth it because of what everybody wants and also because of what I know people need, like anybody that I work with and. My little silly job is like, do you know of anywhere? Do you know of anywhere? When I go, like, random people I meet are like, that don't even know me, ask this question. So I'm like, if we can have a concrete thing that we've done. Not you, like, that, you know what I mean?
Straight up.
Oh, no, because I know, but I understand, like, I understand that you're concerned about it and I'm not saying, like.
It's not gonna spur, like, private investment, though. Like, it's just like, this is a. Way for us to fix a problem. It's not, no one's gonna see this because again, it's still pretty cost prohibitive from, if you look at it from like an investment standpoint, right? But we're able to do this because of the access, the money that we already have and.
Well, I think if this company learns something as well about. How all of this works. The awareness, I, I think this is gonna be. Fairly well documented on the, how this goes. I think there's a lot that want this to be successful. And if you're trying to build a house and you're trying to find a contractor and trying to find a timeline, just the fact that you could go someplace and say, I want that one. And they say, okay, we'll deliver that in five months. It, it, it may spur just. The opportunity to build it currently is difficult.
I.
I.
Hi. For the record. I do have deep reservations that I really struggled with, as you all know, so I'm gonna vote no, but I totally hope. That I turn out to be completely wrong in my reservations and I want that to be in the record. I'm gonna vote no.
All right, so that has passed. Uh, next up is a discussion item for public outreach efforts. So this is us who set it down. Uh, so. For the last couple of months, we've had different dates where we've gone out, um. To obtain some feedback, doing some public outreach efforts. Um, so far, we have set up in front of Price Topper. Um, we are setting up at the concerts that take place on Wednesday night at the Common. Uh, we have teamed off. And we've been meeting with our department heads. And, uh, we're going to have another public outreach here a couple of days. But I would say it's been pretty successful so far. Um, we all have. We all have everybody's notes here. But we have gotten quite a bit of feedback and I'll open this up to the rest of the board. But I think this has been really good. It's been good talking with Windsor people too. Um. I've got to meet people that I didn't know before, so. Uh, then. Cool.
So I think the upcoming plans we have, I can at least speak to the council on the common, we have. Three more of those maybe.
Oh, is there three now?
And I think it's next, next week, whatever the date is on Wednesday.
Yes.
Then I think throughout August, at least the first. The sixth, I think. I don't know if there's a third one in August off the top of my head, but. Then they'll be more regular after next week.
And Mary and I did the last, the first one. And I think the response was respectable. Uh, I mean, people definitely have feelings that. We didn't get from other meetings, so I think we're hitting different audiences and we do one, so.
And, and we're promoting it a little bit further and advancing, yeah, than we did at Price Topper because we didn't have the time, but. Um, I'm just waiting to put it in front porch forum again, like every week. A week ahead and I'll do that also for the August. Second one, and when that other one gets closer, I'll, I can do that too.
I'll have a flyer.
We'll have it in the newsletter and, um. We'll put it on social media and stuff.
So, yeah, I'll put them in, I put one in Boston Dreams, I put one up at the, um, World Two Memorial Bullet. Little bit of a bullet award with the glass in the front. I put one at. Jill's Lights Business and one of these.
So I think the board is getting out a little bit that we're trying to go to these little different places.
Yeah.
Well, if you don't put it in the Valley News on the same day, three weeks in a row, you're not gonna be able to hire anybody.
We'll, we'll put that under consideration.
I think it's been enjoyable too, just to, I did see, to meet some different people and some new people that. And, and we even got a letter, all of us, from somebody that, I don't know if they're new to town, I don't know what the letter said, but I didn't know that person. So. I think it's a great opportunity to meet some people too.
It's nice to talk to people. Not in a meeting because it is different and you get a different. A little bit of a different conversation. It's more personal. So I liked. You know, when it's, the camera's not on and not everybody's watching and you're not sitting in the hot seat and, um, you know, some people have just said, I just don't like talking in front of people. So, um. I'm personally looking forward to. Probably the next couple of months, doing some more public outreach efforts, but, um. We definitely want to hear from.
And then we'll have it, a meeting where it'd be on the agenda, we can share some common threads, right?
Yeah, I think at some point, you know, we'll get.
The end of the summer or whatever, early fall.
Or, yeah, I don't, I think we're still.
But then, then you see some commonalities that we can share with people during.
And I will say, what was the Lebanon just hired their town manager, and I think that whole process, was it three and a half months?
Three and a half months to find it, then they give, started in March, new person starts the first week of September. So it took them from really the first week of April to the last week of June, to find somebody and make an offer, and, uh.
I thought that was, I thought that was pretty quick, so, um, I mean, that just happened, so it was a little reassuring just seeing, you know, like it took them three and a half months. It may take us longer, it may take shorter, we don't know. But it was at least something to look at before we're getting ready to do the exact same thing.
And we're also hoping on to, um, department heads here in, in the building. So three of us have started that process.
Yeah, yeah, we're really getting around right now. I know, thank you, guys. Well, now we have town managers' reports, so I'm gonna hand it back to Tom.
Okay, it's kind of like old news now, but we had the central main ribbon cutting, so that place is up and running, we're charting them through. Um, anybody who went through the building saw that all the, uh, window things on the outside is the colors, all the trim on the inside, so.
Yes, I saw the video.
Uh, yeah.
Inside, really?
Yeah.
All the doors.
It reflects the, uh, spring foliage colors.
Is that what they're calling it?
I thought you, I was told, I'm, I'm still soaking in it.
There were quite a few people at the ribbon cutting in the ceremony, it was a very hot day.
Uh, it, it was.
On the whole building.
And.
Tom and I were there.
I was, I was told, and Donna Swainy was told, no more than two minutes. And we were the first two, nobody else got that memo, I'll tell you that, that was a lot of talking. Hot.
Sitting in the heat, and listen, every organization who contributed any funds spoke.
But, yeah, she came in the way it was supposed to, it came in on time, they built what they said they were gonna build and people are living in it, so you gotta call that a success.
It looked very nice on the outside, the plantings that they've been putting, they did some re, I learned this from that. That they did research about indigenous plants from a long time ago, and so they had some nice, interesting plantings, and I've noticed they put a picnic table out there recently too. So, I mean, it, it looks nice.
Looked out in between the building and the, the restaurant building next door, there's just a little gap in there, well, they have concrete walls because the other. Property owner won't fix it, and they were afraid the whole parking lot was gonna fall in their building, so they have that, but they did some, there was like a nice garden down there. I mean, it's kind of pretty.
It is. This wasn't about that, but this is a question I have because it's in that area. Once, once the diner moved, what's left, like the basement, is that ours to clean up the towns, or is that part of the diner's responsibility?
Not, not the town.
Oh, I believe it's Wick, they own that.
Oh, because these not the town, so.
Because the building's like nice, and now, and now the diner's gone, so like when you go by, you see the.
When we went to the first one, that was my question to them, and they said that Wick, I guess, I don't know if they have plans or they were working on possible plans.
Let, let's hope we all get along, and I, so far, we all do, we're all a little bit dependent on each other. So while it wouldn't be the responsibility of the town to clean up the foundation, that does seem like it would fall to Wick, but they should also be working with. The diner people and Greg, but the retaining wall for Main Street was kind of the front wall of their thing, and that is the town's. So, and to replace the fence that goes in front. So we will all say that this was a net good thing, and we'll all work nicely with each other to see that it looks like it does, and it's solid.
Good, is that in the works?
Yeah, I, I assume they're gonna get the diner open, that's the first thing, and then Greg will come back over and do the other thing. All right, rail yards recreation process, um, on Monday, the skate park builder showed up, and, uh, they're over there staking things out, and. I stopped over today and talked to him for a little bit, they expect to be finished early October. So I think for all intents and purposes, that whole thing has been, the exchange building will be off limits to the public until next year, I mean, winter time, but. It's, that won't matter, so it's all been hydro-seated, the fence has been put in, the dog park would work as a dog park over there, um, once the grass grows. Uh, we're not gonna say anything about that being available while, like, he's got a couple of construction trailers and everything down there doing that, so. Um, when that gets finished, we'll schedule the paving company to, assuming we get all that other stuff worked out to do the paving, and next spring, we'll have. Picnic tables and, uh, grills and skate parks and dog parks and paths and all that stuff.
Next year.
We'll get the exchange.
Is it the town that's putting the picnic tables and all of that stuff in?
Uh.
Or is it?
I mean, we have them already, but there's a lot of funding sources, the town's putting in some money, but I think the tables and, and, uh, grills and stuff were paid through a Better Places grant.
I was just wondering if they were the same tables.
Yeah, they, they're, they're the whole green ones that are around here, and they're industrial, put them in the ground.
It's nice when there's like, it's just nice because anywhere you go in Windsor, those are the tables that we have, you go up to the fairgrounds there, you go to Kennedy's Pond, they're, they're on Main Street. So it's just nice having kind of like that same.
Uniform table.
Vibe, that's nice.
And I guess I went into the exchange building, and we, just to see how things were looking, and it doesn't look great, it's not terrible, but we did. Find some of the Adirondack chairs that were made by Bob Haight during COVID, the Windsor Adirondack chairs.
Those are nice.
They are nice, and unfortunately, when we were having concerts on the common over there at the exchange building, a lot of them were out there, and then a storm, a tree fell over and smashed a whole bunch of them.
My god.
But, so the parts are all in there, but several did survive, and I guess they're up on the common, I haven't.
Are those the new Adirondack chairs on the common, because I, where did those come from? They're beautiful.
That's like.
I remember, the exchange and the concerts down there, but where did the table go that was on the common in? Yeah, we would have liked the table, we were looking for the table.
There was, well, what I wonder, because now there's two in the front, and I think there was only one in the. So where did the circular table on the back go? There was one there.
Maybe it went to the, uh.
The New Billion.
On.
Yeah.
Cause that, it's got cables there now, and we did buy, I'll, I'll ask around, see if they're missing or if they're somewhere else.
I'm just hoping, like, as long as it went somewhere it's supposed to, but we just want to make sure it's not in someone's backyard.
Oh, I didn't know it was in the backyard, I, we figured it got moved somewhere else.
They're pretty darn heavy, but.
Yeah.
They are really.
Nobody would be taking that home.
But the Adirondack chairs, what a nice touch to look on, and. I'll have to thank Bob Haight next time I see him, I see him.
Do that.
And he made all of us.
He was fortunate enough.
Kind of special process or something, I recall.
It is, he's the guy, a, a, um, CNC machine, somebody gave him one. Uh, he said, hey, I had this one, really expensive, Bob had to go through all the, how do you program it to actually make it, but he did, so once you do it, you just. Set it up, walk away for a half an hour, all the pieces get cut out, and you keep doing it, and then set up a production line to assemble them, paint them and all that, and, uh, I think rotary helped them one day. So, uh, yeah, it, it was, and then the, the person who had the CNC machine said, hey, I found a new home port I need to back, so. We had it just long enough to have that happen, but not long enough to say make new pieces for the ones that got.
I remember that, it was a really cool thing, I think, they did a whole, I don't know if you did.
There's a Windsor on there, everything, it's all documented.
It was really cool at the time.
Okay, finance update. Uh, there's a lot going on. Um, things you don't see is, uh, Natalia has. Redone, or we call the chart of accounts, it's all the account numbers that go with all the money that gets spent. Um, it, short version, it's the one we had to been around for a long time, and every time something new comes along, they add a number, if something. Went away, the number wasn't taken away, so it was kind of clunky, and it's hard to work with, so she went through. Made a, a much more logical sequence, the sequence of numbering for all the things. Um, they're all links to different spreadsheets, so she's been working on it for about six months, the new fiscal year is the date that it started, it has started. Once you start using it is when you find out all the problems, and so they're, you know, working, all, all of it's expected, but they're going through all of that. So it's, uh, um, it's keeping them busy. As far as how do we end the last fiscal year, there are, uh, there are two numbers. One is, uh, we had a seventy thousand dollar decipet deficit, that's.
How much was it?
Seventy thousand, and there's another one that is a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit. The auditors will look at the seventy thousand dollar deficit. So I had been expecting a hundred and fifty thousand dollar deficit, so because of this redoing the chart of accounts. All the numbers aren't all in the right place yet, um, I know that there's. At the hundred and fifty I was looking at, I know there was a thirty thousand dollar truck repair, a ten thousand dollar, uh, actuarial report, there, there was several unbudgeted. Big repair to an ambulance, I don't know, I don't know if the other money is, the reason there's the spread is because, um. The, uh, the auditors will combine a couple of funds, and they will include grant revenue and expenses, and we got, um. A lot of grant revenue in above and beyond what we had to spend, because like we get money if our guys do the work, for example. So the real money lost is seventy, but if you just wanted to look at, well, we've passed a budget that said this, and we spent that, it's two-ish.
Cash, actual cash, it's just seventy.
Yeah, so given that that was the year, is, uh, everything was cut, we assumed nothing bad would happen. Because we had the school, uh, tax pressure, uh, didn't put anything in the, the reserve funds, um. We'll survive it, you don't want to do it terribly much, but, um, I'll have a better number in, um, August. And finally, and just as part of the other stuff that's going along, uh, Kevin McAllister is down in Louisiana doing the final inspection on our six hundred and fifty thousand dollar fire truck, that will be.
Louisiana?
Uh.
We're getting it from Louisiana.
We are getting it from Louisiana.
You know, we're helping it.
No, but that's still cool.
Yeah, we understand they build the best fire trucks in the country, and we got a ten percent discount because of you.
Leave it, I will.
Oh, that's my little notice, Tom, you're telling a lie.
Where do I get one of those?
You don't, you don't. So that, um, as you know, we, we, we have a, uh, grant that is paying for. All of about two hundred thousand of that, so we never allocated. ARPA money for that, so at the next meeting, when we have the final amount that we're gonna need, we have ARPA money, still, it's unallocated, so this will be. No trail, no payments or anything like this, so that, that part's good, um.
It's a tanker, right?
Pumper tanker.
Pumper tanker.
Um.
Exciting.
The, the apartment buildings, speaking of them, you know, the town board voted to, uh, contribute two hundred thousand dollars to that project. I was really hoping that they didn't need it, they need it, so, uh, they asked for it, they sent us the invoice, so we're paying in that two hundred thousand dollars. So between all that and the end of the fiscal year and the beginning of the fiscal year, there's, there's been a lot of moving parts, but. We're all good, except for that bomb thing.
All right. I think now we just need a motion to sign orders.
Make the motion.
Second. Mary, how do you vote? I.
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 This is chair only, this is that thing Mary O'Brien wanted.
Yep.
This is the Halli Judicial Bureau. This one of all the stickers on it is the car loan, all this stuff he just had to put aside on the front page. Okay.
I'm gonna say there's no public comment because there's no public, um, but how about board member comments? Brian, what do you have?
Well, it's been a very light meeting, um, and I'll maybe make it a little deep, but I just wanted to thank, um. Tom, all our emergency services, all the, uh, neighboring emergency services. Uh, and the public that all worked really hard at a recent tragedy and, uh. You know, Tom Sears, I'll share a little story, um, you know, I showed up kind of towards the end, and Tom was there, and he. He'd been there for a long time, and to see him support, you know, our folks was, was pretty amazing, but then, uh, he goes home, gets a cooler and brings water down to the folks. At the, uh, the firefighters and police that were working down there on a pretty hot day, and I just thought that was, uh, something he didn't have to do, and it meant a lot, um. And it was a very heavy cooler, because I carried it back up the hill, um, but I think with that, uh. You know, just should be noted, and thank you for doing that.
I think.
I killed it, didn't I?
I know, my god, no, I. I met a woman, that, that, this is what I wanted to say, and I was really excited about it, as it has been. A difficult couple of weeks, and I met somebody who, uh, she told me she came from Las Vegas, and I was like, why are you here? How did that happen? And she said, well, I've been, just my family's been really unhappy where we've lived the last couple of times, we moved around, and I did so much research about where to go, and I found this place, and I was like. Nice, okay Windsor. And it was like, I think it was on a particularly just weird day in my personal life, and I was like, hey, okay, there's a little cool sparkly thing in the world, that's that we have this very. Sweet, interesting family now here because of the internet. And I thought that was really nice. I'm just gonna second what Brian said, I was gonna say something along those lines, but, um, yeah. It was a really horrible time, but to see all of the departments in action, just. We have amazing people in all of our departments, and I would look good at that.
Um, I'm not sure I have anything really to add to that. I'm enjoying the process of fun, talking to, um, people in the community, getting, uh, opinions from them, yeah, it feels like useful work. And all the department heads as well. Reinforce what Jeffrey said, other than that, I don't have anything new to add to anything.
This is the top. I know you spend time losing them on my.
You're a prank to the whole world.
Super good. Well, we gotta keep it going with side orders. Has everybody been to Casa Luisco in Claremont? Have I already talked to you guys about Casa Luisco?
No, is it?
I love Casa Luisco so much, it's across the street from.
German place.
No, baby.
Oh. Little one that's at the back.
Yes, it's so good, the service is incredible, the food is really, really good.
Washington Street or Pleasant Street?
Washington.
No, Captain was on.
Oh, that's where we, uh, ran to, Rancho, yes, I've never been to Rancho.
I talked to somebody, said, let's go to that new Mexican restaurant in Claremont, and they were meeting people there, and they're on the phone, I. They, they, one, one, three, one on Pleasant Street.
I've heard, where's the, so, well, okay, I have only been to Casa Luisco because I, it was like, where am I gonna go, like, I've already been to heaven, I'm not going anywhere else. And they also, their queso is so good, and it's.
Where is it?
It's across the street from Walmart.
It's behind in the back of the building.
Okay, okay, there's a sign sticking, there's, they have an open sign, and it's just really good, and I love them.
Like on the street front, there's like a janky car shop that works on.
Yeah, yes, don't ever go there for a car.
I'm just.
Uh, do go there for a car and meet us.
Guess we're not getting, it's a new business here in Windsor, they'll stick to their business.
I do really want to be like, have you guys thought about franchising in Windsor? Because then I can, like, you know, just never leave this down.
The Mexican.
I'm gonna be down for that.
There is another one.
Another Casa Luisco?
Yes, I forgot, maybe, or somewhere over that way.
Four.
You know, Coach Casa Luisco.
So now they're, that's my dream, like, when I go there, they're like, see you tomorrow, because I go to that one, it's kind of embarrassing, but.
Have you tried the fried gouda dip at Tavern on the Square?
No, I don't want to know about that, don't tell me about that.
It is literally the best thing I've ever had in my entire life, yes. And I'm addicted into that, like. I don't know what they put in it. But that is the most amazing appetizer I've ever had in my life.
Wait, we only have to sign that stuff on them.
The only one you had to go into is the one with the tap. Nice.
I'll say Alan has done a great job taking care of bones for our dog, Leo, at, at, at the Price Chopper, Leo goes through a lot of bones and uh.
And now you got a bone guy, so.
Got a bone guy, you know, there's always a nice, almost always a nice, well, there's always a nice selection, sometimes not the quantity that we like to pick them on, so. That, that small town market, you know, connection with, with butcher.
He always said, just have him show me what's in me.
I'll make it work. Well, I have bones saved too, I didn't know I needed to have a connection, but.
Well, if you want, like, he wants his. He wants like more than just a few. And so Alan's like, I do whatever you want, just let me know.
He wants, because he.
So if you want a bigger package, you just talk to the meat man and.
He said, look, I have to sign this thing promising every day, I will not cut these bones, so I.
Why?
He doesn't, that butcher looks like that. But I had to go home with a chop saw and go.
You gotta do it.
You own this dog. You love this.
I love my wife, my wife loves a dog, I do love dogs, but there is a. If it came to the Titanic and somebody had to get in a lifeboat, I wouldn't be getting it.
He's telling.
Oh my god, you play with my supposed dog.
She would go.
It would just happen.
He.
I would be standing there saying, ladies and.
He'd be Leo and Kathy'd be waving to him and him and her and Theo would be, I've seen it's an act.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at seven forty-five.
Okay.